City Council work session due to the coronavirus pandemic. This meeting is being held via the Zoom platform. This meeting is also streaming live on the city of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. And then please note, this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having any technical or connection difficulties, please contact our public information specialist, John Vernon. His number is three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero, and he'll be able to support you. For staff comments or to address the city council or staff during the meeting, you can indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom. Or by pressing star nine on your phone and our meeting host, IT Director Scott Bibler will notify me that you wish to speak. Or we'll address your question at that time. As a preliminary matter, I'm Mayor Ian Balchudas. I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff presenting when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
In interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly. Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese. Planning Manager Conrad O'Meadle.
Here.
GIS Administrator Andrew Shore.
Here.
Inspections Department Director Jay Mevan.
Here.
Principal Planner and Long Range Planning David Beal.
Here.
Excellent. First on our agenda, item A is a chicken and fowl update. At this time, we'll recognize Conrad O'Meadle, our planning manager.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. This is my first go at it.
They should give you a privilege and you should be able to share your screen.
Excellent. I will be sharing my screen here. See what screen am I sharing? All right.
Here we go.
Can you see the, which screen are y'all able to see?
We can see the PowerPoint.
Excellent.
Application. Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, good evening, Mayor, council members and staff's been asked to give you an update on a discussion about chicken and fowls regarding within the city limits. Let's see. I'm Conrad O'Meadle, your planning manager. Just as an overview, the, the idea of having chicken and file of being grown from home is a matter of producing food and other items such as eggs, and that's just gained some interest due to the pandemic that we're in right now, as well as other economic impacts. As a result of this, staff was asked to review the current conditions throughout the state and other cities, some of other example cities regarding chicken and file regulations. Historically speaking, in the city in June of two thousand and six.
Conrad, just FYI, if you are flipping through the slides, we're seeing the primary PowerPoint slide, and so it's not moving.
It's not moving. Correct, sir. Thank you. Let me go ahead and stop my, I think this is why here. I think this is what happens when you have three screens on your, it's like, which screen am I using? All right, let's start this again. I'm going to share. Let's see, here we go. This one ought to be it. Okay. You should be able to see the, the PowerPoint.
Looks much better.
Presentation. Okay, so the history here, so two thousand and six. City Council approved an ordinance restricting or prohibiting chickens foul within city limits. Some of the factors were involved in this decision were the complaint volumes, noise, smells, et cetera, and then staff time dedicated to deal with the issues. Oops. Okay. So some considerations for us right now would be allowing food residents to grow their own food for meat and eggs. Considerations for regulations of the placement of coops, some number of chickens could be developed and look further into. Considerations are nuisances that chickens could pose to neighbors such as smell, disease, and attracting predators. And also how this would place an increased demand in services for permitting, for enforcement, for enforcement and for complaint response. And then how to manage unwanted animals such as rooster chicks in the event that they're not wanted. So in looking at some north, other North Carolina cities. It might be a little bit confusing, but I did want to point out that currently, so Burlington, we don't allow chickens within city limits. And another city in North Carolina would be Concord. Now, we do have regulations for animal husbandry to allow chickens. There are certain requirements to, to have them, but they are allowed in our ETJ. Based on the, the density that we have out there conducive towards animal husbandry. And then in some other cities that do allow would be Hickory, Greensboro, and Salisbury.
Conrad, do you know which cities in our immediate proximity allow it? It's my understanding, I believe Graham does.
You know, I, I have not looked that up, Mayor. That's a good question. I can definitely research that and find out if Graham, Elon, or other cities in the, in the area, but we did look and Greensboro would be the example of a city that does. And so some points for discussion for council would be, you know, impacts on the community from having chickens, acquiring further input. Deciding, you know, to continue with this ordinance that's in place now, or to consider having regulations to allow chickens within the city. And considering impacts on staff, staff resources. And just so looking for any direction that's council may have for staff to go for next steps. And with that concludes the presentation.
All right, questions from council?
Okay.
Yes, sir. The topic that was brought up towards the city of Burlington from the Alance Cooperative Extension Service. As an agricultural body, they were interested in working to find ways that municipalities could support agriculture in different forms. And one example, as Conrad mentioned, is through backyard flocks or chickens. And so I'm curious what council's thoughts are. I'd like to find out some more information about this because what I've heard from residents from Alance County is that we are, I believe, one of the few cities that prohibits backyard flocks.
Mayor, if I could go back through history in two thousand and six, this, this situation came up, actually. There was research done. We had a, a public hearing, if I'm not mistaken. On the, you, at that time spoke both in affirmative and negative in the council, but didn't know at that time. In that particular situation, I know depending on size of lots. In, in, at that time when we, there were some chickens in this, in the city. Not allowed, but were, and unfortunately, most of them tended to be in your more densely populated areas in terms of, at, at that point in time. R six, R nine type zoning back in the day. And not only was the side yards small, but frankly, we had an awful lot of concerns from, from neighbors. Two things, smells, one, noises, another, and obviously if all the baby chicks and baby ducks are really cute when they're little, but they grow up pretty quickly. And if there's dogs already in the neighborhood, even though there might be fences there, it, there was a real issue between dogs and chickens. We had some chickens somehow got in other people's yards and that didn't work out real well for the chickens when they got in somebody else's yard with the dogs. So my concern about this is that I, I don't, I just, I talked to a young lady over in the Agricultural Extension Agency who, who actually teaches the class on this. And she was, was very honest and very fair. She said she made no recommendations to any cities to do this or not. It's up to them. But I think it's, it's, it's a little bit more to being in just the little small baby ducks and small baby chickens. And I believe from just my experience from growing up on a farm with chickens. I, I understand the economic concept of it, but I, I actually went to the grocery store last week and had to buy some eggs and there were seventy cents a dozen now. From an economic standpoint, unless you raising chickens and you're going to slaughter chickens, I, I, I just don't understand the, the, the financial aspect of it. And I'm not trying to be questioning anyone else's abilities, but I, I don't really see that. I, I, but I do see an awful lot of concerns. Back of the day, minimum housing got smashed with this because we would get calls consistently. Now that could change. But they went into homes where chickens were actually in the house. And of course, that was not very sanitary at the least. So I, I think this one has to be thought about. I have some real concerns. Not that people wouldn't do the best they could, but this is a, a real challenge, I believe, to go forth in a, in a residential area like this. Some communities do really well. Some I'm not so sure of. So certainly that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Harold. Other questions or comments from council?
Question, Mayor, and about the health department. Have they, has Conrad found out anything from the health department? Any regulations or recommendations from the, our local health department? It seemed like to me that would be something need to be explored if we move forward at all.
Thank you for that point, Conrad. Did you have a chance to talk with him or is that what you would reach out to?
I can definitely reach out to the Alance County Health Department and inquire. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Other council questions?
Let me ask the staff to, to get Jessica Arias on the video, please. Maybe Jessica has some more information on the health department question.
Hey, everyone.
Hey, Jess.
Yeah, I think maybe inquiring further with the health department. I know that there are certain considerations when you're dealing with backyard chicken flocks. There are health concerns such as salmonella is usually one of the more concerning issues when it comes to backyard chickens and egg handling and the like. As well as certain types of avian flu viruses that can be carried by wildlife. So certainly some good resources there from the human health aspect would be through our local health department, but also through NC State's Agriculture Extension. We'll have some good information about disease impacts and zoonosis risks within our communities.
And those are listed, Jess, I believe, on the CDC guidelines too, if you go on there.
Conrad's presentation, I know he had listed some links that I had shared with him regarding some of those organizations that link directly to those websites where you can find that information.
Very good.
You know, to Jess's, to Jess's point, the I was, I was reading an article in the Journal of Community Health about this particular aspect. And you know, one of the things that was really highlighted is that hobbyists that would maybe explore this type of activity are, are not well trained in the sanitary aspects of it. And to Jess's point, they talked about just vaccinations and the number of salmonella cases that, that were linked, hundreds that were linked every year in the United States to urban poultry. And, and then the other thing is the sort of alarming in another country, H five N one, bird flu, that outbreak was exposed to, came from backyard poultry. So there, there is a, there is certainly an aspect of public safety regarding training, permitting, vaccinations. How, how do all of these things get regulated? And I just don't know that we're capable of, of handling that. Harold, did that come up in two thousand and six?
Back in Beverly, the minute of the public meeting. We had a, we had some people who spoke for it. We had multiple people who spoke against it and, and, and most of it. The health part was part of it, Jim, but the other part was just frankly, the smell, especially in the summer. And the again, the issue with, in one community, the, the, you know, if indeed if they want to slaughter the chickens, that's not a it's a different experience for some people. And the third thing was again, the animals next boy, especially the dogs. Even if it's cages or fences, they, either one which is loose, that seemed to be a conflict too.
Other questions or comments from council?
Only thing I want to say, I, I hear all of that, but I have to say that this is one topic that a, a number of people over the last four years have brought up to me that they would like to see us allow chickens. I would not want this, but I'm wondering if it wouldn't be good for us to give people a chance to talk about it. It's a different mindset, especially with younger people about where the food comes from. And there's a, a big interest, a much bigger interest in, in it in recent days, I think, not just COVID. Because I've been talking to people about this over the last few years. So I think it would be good for us to at least hold a public hearing and allow people to talk about. I'd, I'd, I think if we close it down, it doesn't give people a chance to talk about why they want to do this.
Yeah, to, and to Kathy's point, when the mayor reached out to me and asked about this as an agenda item, I mean, we've got a lot of resources, Facebook being one of them, that we could put out a survey or, or at, at least get the topic out there for discussion. Those that, those that have an interest are certainly going to speak out about it. Those that don't have an interest that think there's an ordinance that are protecting or are against it or not, you know, they're not going to come remind us every day, hey, I'm glad you guys don't have chickens. So you know, just to get the, the overall temperature of the public, I think is extremely important. And a public hearing is one way, but you know, sometimes people don't get interested in public hearings unless it affects them directly. So if we had some sort of campaign to get some feedback from the community, I, I would really encourage us to, to, to go that route.
But I do.
Yeah, and I think especially in the day of virtual. I think public input or from a public hearing standpoint, maybe more limited than even it was earlier. So I agree with both of you all on that.
Are there other questions? I think definitely need some further discussion. I'm in favor of the public input piece. Are there other areas where council members would like some staff research? I think I'd be particularly curious and kind of where our surrounding community stand is obviously, I do know a couple of them allow it. I don't recall which ones exactly, but as we know, it's neighborhoods bordering neighborhoods. So it can be one property line allows it, the next doesn't. But then also there's been a lot of work since two thousand and six, we last talked about this for municipalities determining ordinances that can allow for responsible backyard animal ownership. And obviously our council's done some work to modernize ordinances. Just before we did some of the ordinance rewrite, it was illegal to have a garden in your front yard. And I think we recognize that doesn't harm anyone. And now you're allowed to, which is a step in the right direction for allowing people to increase their food security. And as Kathy mentioned, a lot of folks have brought this up as a food security question. It's not necessarily about the price of eggs. It's about when the supply is threatened as they are during a pandemic, are cities enabling people the freedom to secure their own food in a responsible manner? So I'd, I'd be very curious to see what other ordinances have been deployed around North Carolina and communities like ours. And how they can address some of the concerns regarding health, safety, training, and responsible ownership. So I'd be curious to have staff bring us some more information about that.
I would like to see some other ordinances to find out whether any of them use a special use permit or do they permit from, you have to have permission from an adjacent landowner. Do you allow roosters? What do you do with rooster? Questions like that. How do they handle that? I would be interested in knowing. Especially if Graham has an ordinance, I'd like to see that.
Other questions, items? Would we like to continue this at our next work session on September fourteenth? Or go ahead and set up a public hearing? Thoughts from council?
I think we should. About Facebook or some other public engagement.
Yeah.
We're getting two people talking at once. Kathy, did you want to? Say that again?
I, I think that we should, idea of Jim's on the public engagement, figure out a way to get some conversation about it previous to doing a, a public hearing. If we then decide we want a public hearing.
Harold, did you have some comments that you were making?
I agree with, with Kathy and Jim both on that.
All right. So should we plan on September fourteenth to have a update from staff and to request staff to do some public comment? Work, reach out and get some feedback from the general population on concerns or desires. And then bring us all the information as another work session presentation.
Mayor, could we do it maybe and, and have the, the first meeting, the first meeting in October at a work session to give them a little additional time to do it? Because here we are in mid-August now. I'd give them at least forty-five days.
So do it for September, sorry, October fifth's work session?
Yeah, yeah.
Jess, Conrad, does that sound reasonable?
Absolutely. So October fifth, we'll have an update with the information requested from council. Yes, Mayor.
Mayor, let me ask Rachel to unmute and see if she has any questions or need for clarification on the, the ask for outreach via social media.
I think we would probably certainly work with Morgan and John and Conrad, but my estimation is that they will come up with some survey tool and distribute it during through several mechanisms using social media or notify me list, website, kind of media outreach to let people know how they can give us some feedback and also create either a phone call or mail-in option for folks that don't have that social media access.
Very good.
The next door platform would, might be a good place to go.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions on agenda item A regarding backyard chickens? All right. We'll look forward to an update on October fifth at our work session. If council members do have questions before then, please relay those to staff. And we'll make sure they get included in that research. And for public, members of public watching, if you are interested in weighing in, we encourage you to reach out. All right. Next on our agenda, item B Burlington Smart Online Permitting and Licensing Portal. Review and demonstration. At this time, I'd like to recognize our GIS Administrator Andrew Shore. Welcome.
Thank you. Evening, Mayor, Council. So this is just going to be a short introduction and demonstration for Burlington Smart, our new online permitting and licensing software. So it's more of a development software that we, you can, it crosses multiple departments. So we've got inspections, planning, engineering, stormwater, and licensing, which includes taxi cab licenses, beer and wine licenses, and solicitor peddler licensing. With the intent to bring code enforcement on in the near future. So we've, we're moving away from Eden, our prior permitting software, which only touched on inspections. It had nothing for other departments. So Burlington Smart will allow our clients, contractors, engineers, and the general public to conduct business online. So they can apply for permit or application online. They can schedule inspections online. They can pay online. Inspection results from any building inspections can be emailed to the applicant. We work with some of our contractors and engineers on, on some of this development prior to go live. So what this does is it tracks all activities on a parcel. So it's tied into our GIS. So over time, we can build a history of the, the activity that's going on to that parcel, no matter what it is. So share my screen here. So here's our, our, our main page. The Burlington Smart Portal. So there's some, a few links on, on our website that gets to this page. From here, you'll you'll get linked to this, to this main page. So this is our active production portal. So on this screen, you can, you can come in through this portal. Or you sign up or log in. Sign up will ask you your, all your relevant information, name, address. But through the portal, you can apply online, you can pay online, you can request your inspections online, and you can view all of your applications that you've, that you've pulled from a contractor standpoint. Or just on your, on your parcel, if you've ever, ever pulled a permit on your, on your property, you'll be able to see the history of it. So this, this is the main page. We've got some relevant information on, on the portal. What it does, any links to, you know, our UDO, some of our stuff on inspections, licensing, planning. So this is the, the look of the main page. So as a, as a software for the public, no need, no need to have a, a sign up. If you're just the general public looking for information, I can come into the parcel search. Type in an address. Select that parcel and I get the history of everything that's happened. You know, in this case at City Hall, so we've got some mechanical permits, some plumbing permits. So these are everything that has happened at, at that location, and that's for every parcel property in the city. So as a you can, there's also a second way to do it through the main portal. As I start to type the address. It lists all the permits that, that were pulled on that address. So I'll just give you a quick demonstration. If, if I'm a applicant trying to come into the portal to request a permit, I'll come to my portal. And I'll apply online.
Just a second, Andrew. I think we're getting some feedback. There we go.
Yeah, okay.
That's better, Andrew. Thanks.
Harold's line. So I think Harold has been muted at this point. Unmute when you, you need to.
So it's almost like similar to, you want to call it TurboTax. It's a self-guided wizard. So you're just going to, you'll, you'll pick the, the category of the, or the department that you want, that you need. So I'm going to build a, do one or two family new construction. You can give it a project name and a description. Anything with a red asterisk here is required. These are not. So as I type in the address, it'll pre-populate, it'll select the parcel and the address. Ability to add contacts. They must be in our system already. Same with contractors, not necessary though. It's going to ask you some questions. All right, so go through and answer some of these. So after these detailed questions are answered. So after these detailed questions are answered. It'll take you back to the, to review in the, your application. It's just a matter of saving. It's going to give you your permit number. It gives you a status. As you, as the project is reviewed by staff, the, the permit status will change. And the applicant will get a email indicating what the status of their permit is. And so if I go to my permit, here's a review. It's going to tell me. In this case, this is, we have to calculate the fees, but if there's any standard fees. For instance, some of our TRC applications, there would be a cost and they could pay directly from this portal. Gives you the details of what you just answered, your parcels, and then this section is key. These are all the required submittals. It's just a matter of clicking on this link. And uploading the parcel or the PDF, the JPEG, whatever they need. And it's basically just as simple as that. So it calculates the, the fee for this new house, what we're going to collect from inspections. Gives everything, all their, once scheduled, the date and the status of all their inspections. And then any other required permits, since the trades need to apply for their own permits, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, everything associated with that. Permit is done directly from this portal.
Very good. As far as any paperwork that's provided or that might be displayed at the job site, does it produce that or?
Yes, from our backend office, we can print that or create a PDF of that. Permit and it gets emailed directly to the applicant and they would display it onsite.
Okay, so I wouldn't have to come into City Hall?
No, no, no need to visit City Hall whatsoever.
Good. Andrew, anything else? Otherwise, you ready for council questions?
No, I'd just like to let you know that the, we actually, we kicked this project off July eleventh of two thousand nineteen. We had our first implementation meeting with Dude Solutions on August thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. We went live on the backend with the office staff July twentieth. And we opened the public portal on August eleventh.
Very good.
Mayor and council, if I could just real quick chime in, I can't say enough. Good remarks for Andrew and he took on this effort on top of everything else he's got going on in GIS. It's a tremendous effort. It takes a lot of work on the backend. There's a lot of data pieces to get set up. A lot of coordination with our finance software. And then Jay Mevin took on a huge amount of work because the majority of our permits comes through inspections. Just countless hours and evenings and weekends with these guys getting this product ready to, to go live. And so I'm very proud of their effort and, and each department too, putting in for their respective departments, the work they did. Just very appreciative and thankful for that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll have to say that I couldn't have done this alone. You know, it's big thanks. For me goes the Jay Mevin, Todd Lambert, Trish Patterson and some of the other staff, too many to mention, you know, in the, the departments that we work with to get this launched. You know, planning, inspections, engineering, stormwater. There was somebody from each of those departments that had a key role in, in launching this product.
Very good. Any questions from council? Alright, well, thank you for that presentation. Definitely a very slick system, looks easy to use. And thankfully, easy for the public to interface with. I think a very timely upgrade, especially during the pandemic. So we appreciate everyone on the team and across the city staff for working on this. Look forward to feedback as it continues to roll out. Very good. Any last items on agenda item B?
Mr. Mayor, I got thrown off, so I did not hear what happened after he talked about the dates that it had been worked on and when it went live. Can you fill me in or summarize what happened after that?
I think it was a summary of kind of the implementation steps and dates. Some of the training, the fact that this requires some coordination across many different departments that all interact with this process.
Okay. Does this eliminate any steps that, that we used to have to do? I'm presuming that this would have some of the same, cover some of the same territory as the T A C does? Is that, would that be true? In other words, when it goes to go to one department and then be sent immediately to the next department rather than having to get together as, and review it?
Yes, that's great. So our TRC projects, some of our plan review and inspections. That all gets routed internally by the software. That's all been, been set up on the backend, so. We've got a few, we actually got a couple TRC projects that came in late last week that is currently under review right now.
Do we have any idea of kind of process improvement metrics that we may see from this as far as shortened timelines?
Yes, I, I think it will. It, it tracks, it can track how long the permit's been in, in the office. It sends out email reminders when. Status or when statuses are due, when reviews are due. So it sends out email reminders to, to the staff that needs to do the reviews.
Any other council questions?
This is the second most requested thing that I have had over the last four years. So delighted to hear this.
I'd be curious, maybe six months from now to get some kind of a, a status update on feedback we've received about the system. And just kind of an evaluation of if, if this was a good step, which I hope it was, seems like it. And then just feedback in general from the users and the staff interacting with it. Is that something council would be amenable to? So Harden, if you could look at a, a future work session, bring back a report on that. Alright, anything else on agenda item B? Andrew, Jay, we appreciate y'all joining us tonight and we appreciate your hard work on this and to everybody who pitched in. A new system like this is a heavy lift, as you mentioned, and we appreciate your dedication to getting it rolling. Alright, next on our agenda, item C, our annexation request for Hanford Road. City Council will consider this as an addition to the August eighteenth meeting agenda. And this time we'll recognize David Beal.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Give me a moment here, I'll share the screen. Let's see. Okay, is it displaying?
Yep, we've got that up.
Alright, thank you very much. Tonight, we have for you a request for annexation. It is a voluntary contiguous annexation request for two parcels in same ownership. As you'll see by the map here, one is a very narrow sliver. It is currently not addressed because there is nothing on the property. It is vacant. And the one next to it is a larger tract, a little over eighty acres. It has an address of fourteen fifty Hanford Road. There is currently one house and a few accessory buildings on that property. To give you an idea of where this, these properties are located. Here is the interstate. This is Maple Avenue going south. And then this is the Shamrock Golf Development here. So it is almost a, a backdoor neighbor to this property. These properties do front Hanford Road there. Like I said, it is two parcels here for a total of plus or minus ninety-two acres. It's somewhat of an unusual request in that most of the time annexations are tied to utility requests, wanting water or sewer service outside of the city. Or something with TRC, maybe a conditional zoning. That's not the case here. While the property owners have been in through their engineer to talk about preliminary uses for these properties. There is nothing officially submitted. So what is being considered is the present use, what is on the ground right now. I did speak with their engineer and asked them why they would want to go ahead and put annexation early in the process rather than later when they actually have a development under review. They said either way, they wanted to be part of Burlington and it was just something that they would be checking off their list if they could go ahead and have it done. So it is unusual, but it is in the council's purview to consider the request. As far as provision of services, a voluntary contiguous annexation request does not require the city to provide extensions of utilities such as water and sewer. Unless it is a distressed area generally in census tract and the use, and that's not the case here. So the city's not going to be on the hook for any kind of extensions here. The existing conditions, like I said, one is vacant, the other one has a single house on there, are what we used to estimate tax revenues for this project. Both of them combined have a current Alamance County tax valuation of four hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars. So using Burlington's current tax calculations, we're looking at an estimated revenue of a little north of twenty-seven hundred dollars a year, two thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars eighty-three cents. If this, if these parcels were annexed into the city, you're looking to realize a net gain the first year of fifteen hundred sixty-eight dollars eighty-eight cents. In that first year calculated fixed costs, we looked at sanitation service to the one property. And we also considered a one-time payment to the E M Holt Volunteer Fire District of six hundred ninety-three dollars and twelve cents. After that first year is, is out of the way, you're looking at subsequent yearly net gains, just based on the tax revenues alone of two thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars and three cents. Again, this is present use valuation. If the property does go through a development process, TRC does review it. It is approved. You're looking at increases in that net gain for the city. And I will point out that there are unused variables when considering the, the potential revenues here. And those variables are cost of providing both police and fire services. Some areas may have, you know, some properties may have ten calls per year, some may not have a call in ten years. So we did not use that for, for these calculations here. As far as zoning, you'll notice that the rear portion of both lots is white here. What the situation is, the front portion of the lots that butt Hanford Road are in Burlington's ETJ. They are currently zoned medium density residential. The rear portions are actually in Graham's ETJ. So we have discussed this with Graham and Graham has concluded that it makes sense for Burlington to be the sole provider of services for both of these parcels here. So they are okay with us proceeding with this request here. If we did annex the parcels, then we would need to assign zoning to those rear portions of both parcels. And that zoning would be something that corresponds with Burlington's land uses, both, both currently and in future. The likely zoning may be that medium density residential, which would line up with the front portions of the lots. And it would also conform with the future land use plan. This is a snippet of, of our future land use plan from our comp plan. The area we're looking at here is this kind of tail, tailpiece of a yellow section here. And that is scheduled to be suburban residential in the future land use plan. And, and we would want to make sure that that zoning is in conformance with that and that M D R would, would be in fact. So if the council decides to pursue annexation on these parcels, then at a, a future council meeting in the very near future. We would bring these parcels back to you to assign that zoning. But that's not part of the request tonight. Tonight, we're looking at whether or not the council would like to consider annexation. So here we are at the work session here. Potential next steps, if you wanted to pursue this, would be to request an add-on for tomorrow night's city council consent agenda. And that add-on would be to adopt a resolution to affix a date of public hearing to consider this request. And that could be either for September first or September fifteenth, either meeting in September, if you, if you chose to do that. And we would advertise accordingly to make sure that all statutes are met for that. And then the next step would be either the September first or September fifteenth meeting. Hold a public hearing, allow the public to, to weigh in on it, allow the developer or the engineer to, to weigh in on it. Close that public hearing and then the council could consider that request. So that's an overview of it, little summary, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, David. Any questions from council regarding this annexation request?
I, Mayor, I have a question I had asked earlier. I posed a question to Harden. I would suggest that September fifteenth as a hearing date. My, my hope was that if there's not too much for the September the first, that we could cancel that meeting. And that's the reason that I'm asking for the September fifteenth hearing date, if that's possible. I don't know what other things and maybe Harden can say or tell us what else is on the horizon. Harden, is anything else on the horizon?
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Yes, sir. So we've, Beverly Smith checked with all our departments and I think all the items that we have can be postponed. The only one that has any extra effort would be to re-advertise a proposed lease for the Burlington Athletic Stadium. That had been advertised previously, but Mr. Huffman indicates we can advertise that again and just push that to September fifteenth. So with that being said, Mr. Ward, we don't have any items that are pressing for September one.
Well, I would certainly ask that the council consider, you know, canceling that meeting and setting that hearing as well for September fifteenth.
Good. Any objections from council to cancel the September first meeting?
That's fine for me.
To the August eighteenth add-on agenda item and the September fifteenth public hearing. Any objection to either of those?
No. No.
Alright. Alright, thank you, David. Appreciate that presentation.
Thank you.
Alright, next on our agenda, item D is a pandemic impacts financial update. This time we will recognize City Manager Harden Watkins and Director of Finance and Risk Management, Peggy Reese.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Reese is going to handle the details of the proposal. Let me give you a quick overview of what we're going to try to cover this evening and just give a, a quick snapshot. We had good news sort of on the out, you know, as we continue with the pandemic on the financial front, we want to share that news with you. We did a, Ms. Reese and I did this report for our department heads at our last department head meeting. So we're going to talk about our local option sales tax actuals for F Y nineteen twenty. We're going to talk about the water and sewer revenue snapshot. Then she's also going to provide an overview of our past due water and sewer billing and the status of that. And most importantly, share the outreach and communication that we have started with our customers. Try to let them know where, where, what the options are now that their, their bills will be due. And then finally, want to share more good news that we've received at council's premiere with this on the CARES Act funding. That number was recently increased. So I'm going to yield the floor to Ms. Reese and she's going to walk through all four of those, again, all four of which are good news items.
Mayor and council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight, I want to share my screen. Can you see that now?
Looks like it's coming up. Alright, we've got it.
Okay, so we are going to go over the impacts from the pandemic thus far. And the first thing that I want to address is what's happened to our sales tax for April, May and June. And sales tax reporting and what month are you talking about can get real confusing very quickly. For instance, people who bought things at stores in March, those stores report their. sales tax that they collected in April. So if you look at this first column here, actual sales for the month of March are reported in April to the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Then the funds are not sent to the individual counties and municipalities until three months later, June fifteenth. So June fifteenth, we found out that our sales for the reporting month of April, the actual month of March, were a million one eighty-four, and that was a six point four two percent decrease from our prior reporting month of April nineteen. Likewise, for actual sales for the month of April that were reported in May to the Department of Revenue, we received those monies July fifteenth. They were down almost eleven percent from the prior year. Then in August fifteenth, we found out that sales tax for the reporting month of June, which were sales actually made in May, they were only down two point three percent. So because of this impact that we saw in May, this decrease, in the year-end budget amendment, we decreased what our original budget was, and I'll get to that in the, in a minute. But for the year, because the first of the year until March did so well, we actually ended the year at a two point oh seven percent increase over the prior year. Anybody have any questions on that part? Then continuing, we, our actual sales tax was thirteen million nine hundred ninety-two thousand. Our original budget was thirteen million eight twenty-four. So we were one point two percent over our original budget. But because we had this eleven percent decrease at the time, we decreased our, we did, when we did our year-end budget amendment, we decreased our sales tax by about three hundred and fifty-three thou, three hundred and fifty thousand. So we actually got three point eight five percent more than we are ending budget. Does anybody have any questions on that? Next, then, I'm going to talk about our revenues for our water and sewer. First of all, I'm going to compare our actual last year for the year, ending June thirtieth two thousand nineteen versus this year, ending June thirtieth twenty twenty. Last year, our sales were twenty, twenty-seven million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. This year, they were only twenty-seven million one hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, a decrease of three percent. Greensboro is not in those numbers, and when we look at Greensboro, last year there was one point seven million in revenues, and this year, almost one point nine million, an increase of nine and a half percent. But then we did a look at our budget for year ending June thirtieth twenty twenty versus what we actually did, and we had a budget of twenty-seven million eight ninety-one. And our, again, our revenues came in at twenty-seven million one twenty-eight, about a two point seven four percent decrease under our budget. So both of these are pretty close comparing actual, actual and budget to actual. Greensboro, our budget was one point nine eight three million for them, and they actually came in at one point eight seven one. So they were about a five point six decrease under their budget. Any questions? Next, I thought it would be good for council to kind of get a little bit of an overview of where our past due balances as of July thirty-first twenty twenty are, and that's the reason I chose this date is that's the end of the month, and the governor's executive orders, one twenty-four and one forty-two expired on July twenty-ninth. And so I thought it might be beneficial for you to have some kind of sense of where the city of Burlington customers are for their water and sewer. So for those who are, have a balance due over a hundred and twenty days past due, we have five hundred and eighty-eight of those customers for a total amount of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty cents. And I don't know if you remember when we went over our payment plan at our previous meeting, council meeting, we talked about that we were just going to take the total past due balance as of July twenty-ninth, July thirty-first, and divide that by six months. So if we take the hundred and sixty-eight thousand divided by the five hundred and eighty-eight customers, we get an average past due balance per customer of two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. There are going to be some customers have more, and there are going to be some customers who have less, but the average is two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Divide that by six months, and we get the forty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. For our customers who are ninety-one to a hundred and twenty days, who have a balance in that timeframe, we have two hundred and sixty-six customers for amount, dollar amount of fifty-three thousand nine ninety-six seventy-two cents, which is an average of balance per customer of two hundred and three dollars, yielding them a pa, a payment, monthly payment amount of thirty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. For our customers who are sixty-one, who have a bound due in sixty-one to ninety days, it's four hundred and twenty customers for sixty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Their average balance per customer is a hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents, giving them a payment of twenty-six dollars and six cents. And the la, last group that I'm, have on my screen is those who are thirty-one to sixty days past due, there are seven hundred and seven of them for seventy-three thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-five cents. An average past due balance of a hundred and three dollars and eighty-one cents for average monthly payment of seventeen dollars and thirty cents. Now, this is what their past due payment for each of these customers will be on top of the current amount. So that's our plan, is they have to pay their current amount due as well as their, their payment plan. Or do I have any questions?
Peggy, you mentioned that was the average, because we have some fairly large commercial users, are there, is that all residential? Are there any?
This is all residential because our, the governor's executive order was for residential, and so that's what we have looked at. Our commercial are are not as do not quite have these kind of balances.
And as far as residential bills, I assume they're fairly, fairly tight as far as the range. So these prices could be, or amounts could be generally considered very accurate, there shouldn't be any outliers as far as exceptionally large bills.
Well, you know, there could be an outlier, but general, no, there's not.
Yeah. Just want to make sure it's not throwing anything off when we look at these. All right, any other questions on that?
So the next thing I wanted to let you know about is if you click on the city of Burlington website and scroll down, this is what you are going to see. We have our COVID nineteen response CARES Act financial assistance, and then we have also a second button that the city of Burlington Water will return to regular billing practices in September. So this is the first screen that you can see, and you can click on either one of these buttons. And the first one, the COVID nineteen, it says that we're helping residents access much-needed financial assistance using funds secured through the Federal Government CARES Act. And you can click on this additional info, and then you'll see this screen that goes into great detail about you must be in a low moderate income qualifications, that's what those dollar amounts are, you must have had a COVID-related loss of work or missing work due to COVID-related illness. And the original due date on the bill that assistance requested for is on or after March tenth. So you've got a place where you can apply online, or you can download the application, tells you who to contact if you have any questions. The second button on the original screen is we're returning to our regular billing practice notice, and if you clicked on the additional info there, you would see that would tell you we weren't following the executive order. We were not allowed to suspend or disconnect until July twenty-ninth twenty twenty. You're not going to face any late fees, interest or penalties on the past due balances. We're offering a payment plan. We'd like you to download that payment plan if you need to use that, and we'll work with you, and it has the connections who you can contact. Again, we have, if you qualify for assistance, you can email community development, the email addresses are there. Any questions about any of those? The last thing that we wanted to briefly mention is Burlington's allocation of the CARES funding from Alamance County. We had first got around one, which was three hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, and then Alamance County got a second round, and they were told that twenty-five percent of the total amount they got had to be allocated to municipalities. Our second round, excuse me, we got four hundred and ninety-five thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars for a total of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. And what can we use this money for? We can use it for expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus. They can't, items can't be budgeted, and the costs have to be incurred by the city between March one and December thirtieth. There are six categories that they've broken down eligible expenses by medical expenses, public health expenses, payroll expenses, compliance expenses, economic support expenses, and other COVID related expenses. So we have got a plan that we will be submitting to the county on Friday for how we intend to use these funds, and that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Questions from council members on this? Peggy, on the initial revenues between the eighteen nineteen and the nineteen twenty, both showed decreases. Is that, that's revenues, not receipts? Is that correct? So that would show a general decline in water consumption or based on the billing rate?
Well, there, there are a lot of factors that go into it. If you remember the email that I sent out, part of the decline is from commercial consumption because we know that we have businesses that have reduced their consumption, stopped production, slowed down production. We know that we've had a two percent increase in, in our rates from last year to this year. Municipalities are billed once a month for the prior month, and so it depends upon when they, when they get their monies in as to how it looks like our payments have come in. You know, Greensboro is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so if they delayed their payment a week, that could, that could alter looking at our payments that we have received. You know, if we do a cutoff date before that payment's been received, so.
But is there any kind of overall trends there?
As best I can tell, we have the decrease in some of our commercial in production. Municipals are staying steady, and for overall, for the most part, we have the residential, the customers that I just talked about who have gotten behind, but otherwise, we're staying fairly consistent as best I can tell.
Peggy, when, can you put the slide back up again? Would that be too much trouble?
No, sir, I'll be glad to.
The, the last one with the, when you were talking about the proposal that we're sending to the county. Right there. So what would be an example of economic support expenses?
Well, I think I'm, I'm not sure that we have got anything in our plan for economic support, but the county joined with a couple of outside organizations with three hundred thousand dollars to, for small, really small businesses who maybe qualify for some of the federal CARES funding for reaching out, those have a plan for the small businesses.
Mr. Butler, I think that's the program. You may have seen something in the newspaper, they're partnering with Alamance Community Foundation. Fairfax Reynolds is heading that up for them, and I think that would be the category they would be taking those funds from to, to use for those support programs.
The council questions? All right, thank you, Peggy. Harden, anything else you want to add?
That's all I have. I think that's all good news, as, as you can see. So the, just as a quick reminder, we budgeted eleven percent less sales tax for FY twenty twenty-one than we did for the previous year. So we reduced our estimates by eleven percent. So, you know, how I interpret this is good news and what we, conversations we've had with our department heads, if, if we saw the bottom, you know, forty-five days ago, and it was ten point nine six percent, so, you know, obviously fingers crossed that our, you know, consumerism continues to, to at least stay steady or grow. We've seen the bottom, which means that our eleven percent decrease, projected decrease for last year, it won't be that, which I think that's a positive piece of news. And then obviously, council members realize this, we did not budget any of the CARES Act funds, dollars in FY twenty twenty-one. So those are new dollars that will be received in twenty twenty-one that we were not counting on. So, and then coupled with, you know, trying to understand the magnitude of the losses on the water and sewer side, and how, how folks can, you know, hopefully make that up over the next six months. I just thought all those were encouraging signs and, and wanted to take a moment to share that. And then, so council, you know, we have the proposal, we're supposed to get back with you in September for a more formal sort of economic report, and you'll see some of this data again next month with a bigger snapshot of what's going on in the state and region in terms of economics, and that's leading to our conversation again in December, which would be our second quarter in, in this fiscal year related to pandemic, to share again with you how the budget's looking. And this was just a precursor to all of that with, you know, hopeful that there may be some things we can restore, you know, effective January of twenty twenty-one.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Kathy, are you muted?
Thanks. In the residential, the, the people who are behind in their payments, there's a very large number in that category of thirty to thirty-one to sixty days. And I'm just wondering if we're now really feeling those people who are not able to keep up because things, you know, loss of jobs or whatever. I'm just keeping my eye on that because that's worrisome.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Next, we have item E, which is boards and commissions reports. It does not look like we have any board or commissions report. So item F is our city manager report.
Mayor, the only thing I have this evening was just to pick back up on the question Mr. Ward asked, the request to cancel the September one twenty twenty council meeting with council's approval, we'll put that as a walk-on item for tomorrow night's agenda to formally cancel that meeting. That's okay.
Doesn't add on it for the consent?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other council questions or comments? I would like to bring up, I had, or sat in on a panel from Common Cause, North Carolina, and they were talking about some of the, the work that the State Board of Elections is doing regarding the election this fall, and some of the changes that they're making to help improve access to. and some of the changes that they're making to help improve access to the absentee ballot program. Um, some of it including allowing for a correction period if somebody misfills out something in their absentee ballot, such as their proof of witness or ID, uh, and then contacts people to correct that. I think they're publishing that information this week or soon. Um, I'd be very interested in, one, getting a report to council on some of the changes to selection. And then two, also looking at how we as a city can make sure that information gets relayed out to the general population through our different channels, whether they're social media or um the city newsletter. Obviously, I know that's front and center on a lot of people's mind. Um, and we as a city support a lot of those initiatives, whether it's making community centers available for voting locations um or other ways that we as a city uh support the democratic process. So would other council members be interested in a staff report on that? Or if we get someone from the board of elections maybe to tell us a little more about that at a future work session?
Be good.
Yeah.
Something brief.
Yeah, just something brief, but I think obviously we as elected officials get a lot of questions from people out in the community. And I know if you haven't already, you will be getting questions. I'm already getting them from folks asking about the election process this year. So I'd like to be well-versed on that, make sure I'm relaying good information to folks.
Mayor, would you like to see that at September fifteenth?
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Someone from board of elections?
Yeah.
Okay.
You should have some stuff, it should be ironed out and publicized within the next week or two. So it should definitely be available for them to share the finalized details by the fifteenth. Any other council questions, comments? All right, we'll go ahead and wrap up and we will see everyone tomorrow evening. Just a reminder that um, we'll hold our August eighteen city council meeting tomorrow, also via the Zoom platform. The meeting link and information about how to participate in the virtual platform uh will be listed on the city of Burlington's website at BurlingtonNC.gov slash media. Uh, that meeting will be live streamed on the city of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com slash COBN C. We appreciate everyone who joined in on tonight's meeting, and we look forward to seeing you tomorrow, seven PM at our city council meeting. Thank you, everyone. Take care and have a good evening.